Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of June 4, 2025 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/MyGlendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/adendas. For public comment and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. Can we have roll call, please?
Board member, Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Malakian?
Present.
Commissioner Minazian, absent, and Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes, here.
All right, and Chair Trochkin?
Here.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the report regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for the June 4, 2025, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on May 29, 2025, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. That takes me to approval of minutes. Approval of Planning Commission meeting minutes from April 16, 2025, and do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Hold a second.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have oral communications. I have a card here from former Commissioner Chang Lee. If you'd like to come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to pay proper respect to the commission, also to the city, and to our planning staff. So it is strange to be on the other side of the dais. So after 16 years of service, you know, it was an honor to serve as a planning commissioner. There were some good decisions that was made. There were some ones that I, you know, I could go back, but, you know, I did my best to deliver the best, what's best for the city and for the Glendaleans. So it is with my deepest gratitude to the city that after 16 years that I can enjoy my retirement and continue with my personal life here. So again, thank you, staff and City Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Can I give you real quick the planning decision? We actually, we have a thank you card for your many years of service with us, as well as a resolution that we'd like to present you with.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Mr. Lee.
Oh.
Yeah. I just wanted to say likewise, we enjoyed having you at the Planning Commission. We trust your decisions and your wisdom, and thank you for the many, many, I think the longest planning commissioner we ever had. Thank you for your service and help.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee, I want to personally reiterate, I mentioned last meeting, but, you know, seven years ago when I came on, you always supported me. You never looked at me differently for being young, and you always kind of guided me through the initial steps and what was expected as a commissioner, and I'll never forget that. And I truly appreciate that, and thank you so much for your service to the city. It means a lot to all of us. So thank you and best of luck with whatever you decide to do.
Yeah, thank you. I see that my successor, Alan, has the beer too, so.
That's only right.
That was a requirement, actually. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. We had a very short period overlapping what I served here, but I truly appreciate working together and really thank you for all those years of service. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Wish you the best.
Well, I'm gonna, I have a big shoe to fill, so I'm, I'll try to do my best, and I'll welcome any calls. If I do anything wrong, you're welcome to give me a call. So thank you again. I do have a little speech that I'm gonna talk about, but I do thank you for your services and for your time. If anybody knows, I do, the number of years you have sat in here.
Well, your first Planning Commission meeting, you have all these identities.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So I don't believe we have additional oral communications, so I'd like to move forward to board and commission member comments, and I believe we have some comments from our newest planning commissioner, Commissioner Malakian.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow commissioners, planning staff, and members of Glendale community. I wanted to begin by sincerely thanking Councilwoman Ellen Esatorian for nominating me and the entire City Council for your trust and support in appointing me at the next planning commissioner. I'm honored to step into the role as a fellow commissioner, Mr. Lee, whose many years of the dedicated service have made a meaningful impact on our community. As a licensed architect and a proud Glendale resident of over 40 years, I've always believed in the power of the design and planning to shape not just the buildings but communities. For more than 16 years, I have privilege to serve on the Design Review Board, where I work closely with the city staff, colleagues, and public to ensure the new development reflects both quality and the character. Glendale is more than just where I live. It's where I grew up, I built my business, and raised my family. I care deeply about its future and committed to helping preserve what makes our city special while guiding it thoughtfully into the future. Thank you again for the incredible opportunity and a humble, grateful, and ready to serve.
Commissioner Fuentes?
And welcome, Commissioner Malakian. I've known Commissioner Malakian when I was the Planning and Zoning Administrator for 30-something years, so look forward to working again with you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malakian. We look forward to working with you going forward. So that brings us to old business. I don't believe we have any old business at this time, so let's proceed with new business. Item 1, Lost Flores Motorway, PWTF-001925-2023, and I believe we have a presentation and some commentary from staff.
Thank you so much. So for this item, upon further review, both Planning and City Attorney staff are asking the Planning Commission to continue this item to a date uncertain, meaning it would be renoticed when a new date is selected. The proposed wireless facility is cited within protected ridgeline areas, and in re-reviewing the ordinance, we've determined that it would not be permissible. Staff is asking for the continuance in order to work with the applicant to relocate the facility outside of the ridgeline areas. And again, at this time, we don't have a new hearing date, but the project would be renoticed at that time. We did receive a lot of comment letters, and we do have many members of the public here today who wanted to speak on this item, but we are asking that it be continued.
Thank you. I'd like to make a suggestion, and if anyone disagrees, I'm happy to deliberate before turning it over, but I'd like to give an opportunity to those who came to speak for two minutes if they would like to speak, or they could defer their talking time to when we rehear and have it all done in one meeting. Our sincerest apologies. I know it takes a lot of time to kind of set your schedule aside and come and attend our meetings, and we appreciate that, so just want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak if you would like to do so, or we can wait until we hear it with the full set of case facts.
This quick question, is the location gonna go change for sure, or there's a chance that? Okay. So many of the comments are not even gonna be applicable. This may?
The site won't necessarily change, but the location of the facility on the site is what we would want to work with the applicant on.
Site, meaning the 540-acre site?
Yeah, so the actual project address, I believe, would remain the same. It's where this facility is located on the property that we would look into further with the applicant.
It could be half a mile away from where it is now, potentially.
Potentially. We would work with them to make sure it's located outside of the ridgeline areas.
I'm okay either way.
Sure. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, and we can continue. One of the questions that I had, and I don't know if this will help, or, is it true that the WTF facilities, based on the local jurisdiction control, is oversight is preempted by federal law?
Commissioner Malakian and members of the Planning Commission, radio frequency, the health risks, alleged potential health risks are not something that a local jurisdiction can base its denial of a permit on, because those are strictly regulated by federal law. But as far as the design, location, things like that, we do have jurisdiction over those items.
Okay. Thank you. And the second question, now that the idea is that it's gonna be moving, there's almost over 100 letters that we received, primarily, most of it has to do with the Wildlife Corridor, and recent experience found out that there is a corridor going along that area. Would that be part of the study when you're studying for the new location for the ridgeline and the Wildlife Corridor? Because apparently, there is no designation written in the city guidelines or the map, so it's a kind of an open-air, kind of a, you know, it's a diagram that it's not really in the city guidelines or anything, so.
As far as I'm aware, there's nothing requiring it, but I would leave it up to planning staff to answer that question a little further.
Thank you.
It is something we can look into, but again, it's not something we recognize, but we would work with the applicant to try to stay out of that if we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, I guess from an admin standpoint, I can just go and read each of the name cards, and I can get either a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you intend to come speak, and we can handle it efficiently that way. So the first card I have here is from the applicant, John McDonald.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. I'd like to thank planning staff and Eileen for reviewing the project, and I can answer any questions you might have, or we can just wait till the end if anybody has any questions.
I think we basically just want to know if you're good with continuing the process.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, that's all.
Thank you. The next card I have here is for Todd Petrosian.
Okay.
Okay to talk or not to talk?
Continue.
He's okay. He's not talking.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you will talk, come up then.
Come up then. You have two minutes. Do we have staff timing?
Yeah. And we have to let them know that if they talk now...
Yeah, the idea is if you present now, then we would expect like for the same commentary not to occur when the, when we have the hearing on the item.
By presenting now, I'm not allowed to present at the next hearing.
Yeah, that's...
No, I'm gonna say so. I'm just gonna repeat.
If it's the same commentary is my point.
Okay, no, it'll be different. Okay. All right, do I get like a?
You can go ahead.
All right, cool. My name is Todd Petrosian. I'm a teenager who lives at 1486 Sunshine Drive, 91208. I have a lot of fond memories of this trail with my family, and it's important to me and to many others. That is why I am against the application to build a 50-foot-tall wireless communication tower and structures at One Lost Flores Motorway. There are a lot of reasons why we shouldn't allow for this tower to be built, but first, I want to go over the loopholes that they're currently using to even be able to apply. First, they cite a CEQA Class III exemption for small structures, but this is not a small structure. It's a 50-foot-tall green metal tower with an accompanying diesel engine. If this qualifies as a small structure, I'd love to see what isn't. The reason they even try this is because it allows them to skip over an environmental impact report. This area is prone to fire danger, and by skipping over an environmental impact report, we are putting our community at risk, all for the profit of a company. After January's Eaton fires, we should treat fire hazards as active risks to our communities, and putting this tower here definitely poses a threat. This risk is not unfounded. The Environmental Health Trust found over 70 unique incidents in 2024 alone where a cell tower was directly the cause, with some even being directly the company's fault. These are not hypotheticals, but even if you don't believe in the cell tower igniting, believe in the diesel engine with 54 gallons of fuel on a dry ridgeline, a definite fire hazard. To sum it up, by filing under a CEQA Class III exemption, they don't have to file an environmental impact report. That means they don't have to check for fire risk, habitat destruction, pollution, visual impact, and if there are other locations or smaller structures available. Both you and I know that they're abusing this exemption, and we must not let it pass. They say that there's a gap in their coverage, but they provide no coverage maps, no official complaints, and no community requests. Nobody asked for this cell tower, and even if they did, it's a gap in AT&amp;T's coverage. The only group who currently has a problem is AT&amp;T, and they're making it our problem. They also say that the problem is indoor coverage within the residential area. Exactly who does this tower benefit? In a residential area, there are homes which have Wi-Fi. This is completely needless. They say that this is their only feasible option, but they don't back that claim up either, most likely because it's...
Thank you, Mr. Petrosian.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker card I have is for Douglas Good.
I think I might pass for now. Can I reconsider later?
Yeah, I'll leave it to the end. I'll come back to you. Next, I have Kelly Matthews.
I'll forego until further information.
No one wants to go after him, probably.
It's hard to back that up. Next, I have Ruth Ann Berry.
I'm fine with this. Okay, okay, I'll say I'm fine. We'll go next. I wrote this out, so why not?
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for letting me speak to you. My name is Ruth Ann Berg, and I'm a resident of the Glendolls area in Glendale. I'm here to urge you to reject the proposed AT&amp;T cell tower on our undeveloped ridgelines. This location is a high wildfire risk area, introducing industrial equipment here, especially one with electrical components adds fuel to a dangerous situation we already face each fire season. My home insurance is renewed in September, and I am uncertain if they will even renew my insurance this year after what happened in January. The tower would also scar one of our last natural ridgelines, and eyesore that damages the visual character of the area and the surrounding property values with it. Beyond that, this is a critical habitat. The noise, lighting, and disruption from tower construction and maintenance threaten local wildlife that depend on this undisturbed corridor. I am also wondering why this project is exempt from environmental review as a Class III, and I quote, "new construction of small structures." Has AT&amp;T looked at other sites? Are there other cell towers along Glendale's ridgelines? If so, can you tell me where these are? We're not against better cell service, but this is the wrong place for a tower. Please protect our ridgeline and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Barton Matthews. If you could just state your name and address when you come up.
Hello, my name is Barton Matthews, 1146 Mount Baton Drive, Glendale, California, 91207. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. Congratulations, I'm in a new position. I think this will speak a little bit to some of the things you just touched on there. I'm here to strongly oppose the AT&amp;T tower. The Glendale Municipal Code 3048070 has very clear design standards for wireless facilities to minimize visual impact, protect scenic resources, and ensure compatibility with the surrounding environment. And this proposal fails those standards in multiple serious ways. And the city charter also is very clear. Primary ridgelines are an exhaustible and precious scenic resource of the city, and its citizens are worthy of preservation. And this proposal flies in the face of that principle. Placing a 50-foot monopole on one of the few remaining ridgelines guarantees maximum visibility, and it's also being built on a 10-to-15-foot small tump, so looking up, it's gonna be 65-foot tall. It would dominate the skyline, stand completely isolated against the open sky, and become a permanent, highly-visible scar on the landscape. The faux-eucalyptus design doesn't hide the tower. It makes it conspicuous and out of place in an area defined by native chaparral environment and open hillsides. The project also poses real environmental and safety risks, as we've touched on. It increases wildfire vulnerability, disrupts the Wildlife Corridor, and cuts into the natural ridgeline. And also about the visual character of the neighborhood, we had Glendolls HOA sent an email to Eileen, who, collectively, many, many people have sent me. I went door to door. They were shocked. They couldn't believe this was the spot to pick it from. And as I said, the impacts are not hypothetical, they're permanent. It's opening the door to further development. On the project report, it said they were gonna co-opt that with other people who could come in, so we're asking for a smarter location. It looks like we're heading that way, which is great, so thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Christopher Smee.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Christopher Smee. Address is 1332 Loretto Drive, Glendale. Thank you, Planning Commission, for your time. I'd first like to ask if somebody in the staff, we had a hint of what was the actual number of public comments received. I'd like to know that tonight. I'm a Glendale resident, and I'm also representing the Friends of Sunshine Preserve, who is the direct neighbor of this project site. I'd obviously like to dwell on the implications of what's been said tonight, but just to give an indication of why a lot of people might have been in touch, so you know the background, our volunteers since 2023 have volunteered hundreds of hours to restore the native habitat in the three-and-a-half acres of the Sunshine Preserve, to enhance the Wildlife Corridor between the Verdugo Mountains and the San Rafael Hills. The data collected from our wildlife cameras demonstrates this regular movement of wildlife from bobcats through to mule deer, snakes, owls, indicating that wildlife travel between the habitat of the Sunshine Preserve and the habitat within what is now maybe the old location of the proposed site. So I'm glad that somebody somewhere has been listening to this and taken into account the changing state laws about protecting wildlife connectivity. You've clearly listened and looked at your own rules about primary and secondary ridgeline areas. No conditional use permit was sought by the applicant if it was in a primary. The structure exceeds height allowance for secondary ridgelines of 15 feet. I mean, this is obvious stuff. Why did it get to this point? I think the application was lodged in August 2023, and it's got to this point? There's a serious failure somewhere in the planning department to now say, oh, we've changed our mind, we realize we've made a mistake. But I would like to say, challenge the fact that you say it's exempt from CEQA. It's improper. And I can put that in a future letter if my time's out now.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Ryan Tish. Please just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Tish. My address is 1332 Loretto Drive. I submitted a detailed letter to the commission, and I would direct your attention to that when you have time to review it. It goes into specific detail about Glendale's own municipal code requirements specifically for wireless towers. It's Section 30.48.070, and I want to highlight just a few very special provisions that apply directly to the current project site, and I appreciate that the city staff has taken a further look and decided that it's not in the city's best interest or does not comply at all. Specifically, subsection F13 says that wireless telecommunications facilities cited on mountainous terrain shall blend in with the surrounding existing and man-made environment to the maximum extent possible, and a finding is made that no other location is reasonably legally or technically feasible. That means that AT&amp;T has to study every single alternative option, and I appreciate that that's going to be done in the next steps, but even on the next option, it should not go in mountainous terrain unless they take every opportunity to put it in the least visible, least prominent position that will not affect our skylines, our ridgelines, our view for hundreds of feet, could be miles, depending on the location. It's very important. One other provision is that F1, it should not stand out from its surrounding environment, and it gives an example. In the code, it says, "such as a faux tree standing alone in a field or standing at a greater height, five feet or more, than other trees on the site." And that's exactly what the current site was doing. So again, I appreciate the city staff and the commission for understanding that this is an issue and looking forward to seeing what the next proposal is.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Susanna Lu.
I'm gonna pass.
Okay. So that brings me back to Douglas Good. Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Well, thank you for having this public meeting. I think that's very important. Let me just check here what I was intending to talk about. I sent this email out, and I said, "I'm concerned with three issues, namely, cell tower radiation, the backup diesel-powered generator, and the potential that the base of the installation will become a graffiti magnet." The first two issues I don't feel are valid any longer after talking to John, the AT&amp;T However, the last issue about graffiti is a problem, and he agrees. By the way, before I bring that up, my connection to the Verdugos is through mountain biking and occasionally hiking. Since the pandemic, I've been mountain biking twice a week. I'm very religious about that and very consistent, and I go up Sunshine, which is also known as the Lost Flores Trail, and I go as far as the Tank, which is at the top. It's a cistern, and it's across from Mount Tom. And today was one of my mountain biking days. My buddies are all up there. There's sometimes a group as many as 10. And right now, that particular cistern is constantly being painted, or it's constantly being, what should I, vandalized by graffiti artists.
Can we give an extra 20 seconds? Because he was getting his phone out in the beginning.
So I have, I'm gonna say, actually, I'm gonna read this. "The tower base holding the backup batteries, diesel fuel, and other equipment will become a graffiti magnet." Almost every structure in the Verdugos has become a destination for graffiti vandals. The cistern across from Mount Tom is frequently under attack. After contacting the City of Glendale about graffiti removal, I got nowhere.
It's over.
I had to take matters into my own hand and...
Thank you, Mr. Good.
...spray over the vandalism.
Mr. Good, thank you.
On the cistern, that is as of this week is...
With all due respect, I gave you extra time than everyone else. Thank you so much.
Pardon?
Your time is up, sir.
Really?
Yes, yes, I gave you extra time as well.
You don't want to know what the message is. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff before we continue?
Yeah. Just, go ahead. So for clarification purposes, we're gonna renotice and let everybody else know what's...
Yes, just to be clear, this project will be renoticed, so you will get another notice in the mail when we have selected a new hearing date for it.
I'm sorry, may I ask something? We never got any notices in the mail.
We are required to mail notices to owners and occupants within 500 feet, and maybe you might be just outside that boundary, I'm not sure. Site is also posted, and we also publish our notices online as well as in the news press for some... press for something like this, or in the newspaper, not news press, I'm sorry.
My questions were very site-specific, so I think I'm gonna pass and wait till I see the new application.
I just have one brief comment for staff. I think I've mentioned this in the past for similar projects, but it would be really helpful in our staff report if we can understand some of the alternative site locations within a site area that were even considered, because a frustration I have when these come to the planning commission is it's framed in a way that indicates that there is no other alternative site that would be feasible, but we're rarely given the appropriate backup to validate that claim. So, it would be very helpful to the commission if we can at least, you know, it doesn't have to be a breakdown of every single site, but if we can at least understand some of the methodology and reasoning for that. I think the public also deserves to know in writing from staff what was considered, and that would be helpful to us all. So, that would be my one request, and looking forward to rehearing it at a later date.
Okay, noted for next time.
I just want to add one more, if I may. So, going through the plans, one of the items that we're missing, and hopefully, next time when we come, I need to know the distance to the nearest residential structure. Nowhere in there, kind of, it's all diagrammatic, so I need to understand that. Also, when the, more of aesthetic or camouflaging the structure, understanding the location that it's going and what are some of our options to see how that structure can be camouflaged. So, it seems like it was just one presentation, one type of a covering, let's say if it's in foliage or some sort of a tree area that is, you know, sycamore. Can it be in that location? Can it be covered in that sense or camouflaged in a sense? But the distance to the residential is more important for me. Also, how that's gonna be, also the structure itself, seeing some options there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, do we need to move to continue the item then and take roll call?
Yes, right? To be renoticed. Yeah.
How many comments received?
Yeah, can we get that on the record, too?
And do you have any... Approximately 120.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, can we have a roll call to renotice the item?
Do we have to make a motion?
We need a motion.
I move to continue.
And a second?
A second then.
Okay, thank you. You did. All right. Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Malakian?
Yes.
Commissioner Nazarian?
Yes.
And Chair Chiracjian?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to community development department updates. Do we have any updates from staff?
Just a couple quick updates. We do not have anything agendized for our next meeting on June 18th, and the next day is also a holiday, so city offices will be closed. And Long Range Planning wanted me to just make a general announcement that they anticipate releasing the draft land use element and environmental justice element in early July for public comment. The public comment period is expected to be 45 days, so anyone interested can visit www.glendaleplan.com for updates, as well as those documents will be placed online there when they're available, and that should be expected at the beginning of July.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Adjourn.
Enjoy.
Thank you.